Seven o'clock PM on the Fourth of June, Tuesday. And I'd like to call the regular Board of Trustees meeting for the Village of North Hudson, called to order. And as we decided in the last meeting, we have an invocation. Almighty God, we acknowledge our dependents upon thee and we beg their blessings upon us, our parents, our teachers, and our country. Please watch over our military and peace officers, and please guide our leaders as you guided our founders. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Trustees head, absent. Klein.
Here.
O'Brien Bergland.
Here.
Rhodey.
Here.
Stanifer, absent. President Wecan.
Here.
Trustee Zappa.
Here.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. Next item on the agenda, review of approved minutes from the regular board meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I would like to have the minutes stand as posted. Comments from the floor. It's an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities not on today's agenda. I'm guessing by the group we have here that we're here for an agenda item, and so if there are no other topics, we will move on to number four. 2013-2014.
Do we normally vote on approval of the minutes? Isn't that typical here or not? Did we change that?
We were... If there is no... According to the Roberts rules of what I've been told, it's an expedience.
There's no change. Okay.
With all the corrections.
That's the way they do it, so...
Yeah, so, I mean, it could be here a while.
Sorry.
That's okay. I appreciate your counsel. Item four, 2013-2014, Class A/B alcohol beverage licenses, cigarette license, and amusement permits. We have five different items on there, and as we have done in the past, if we would have one of the board members like to pick one, and, you know, and we'll go down the list and for the approvals, make the motions, please.
Well, I'll start down your left side today.
Okay.
I move to approve the Class A fermented malt beverages and Class A intoxicating liquor licenses for Village Liquor Store, Kimberley White Agent, and with an effective date of July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014, as recommended by the village clerk. All license approvals are contingent upon any outstanding payment obligations to the village being satisfied.
Thank you, George. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. This is not a spending and/or issue that we need a roll call, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next one, alcohol beverage license renewal, Class A beer only.
I'll move to approve the Class A fermented malt beverage license for Freedom Value Center Inc., Paul Kirk Agent, with an effective date of July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014, as recommended by the village clerk. All license approvals are contingent upon any outstanding payment obligation to the village being satisfied.
Thank you, Colleen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Alcohol beverage license renewals, Class B. Class B.
Let me take that one. Well, I'm on that one.
Okay.
Motion to approve the Class B fermented malt beverages and Class B intoxicating liquor license with an effective date of July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014, for LDJT Inc., DBA, The Village Inn, Lee Helverson Agent, Malloo Inn Inc., DBA, Malloo Inn, Peggy Multer Agent, Stars Bar Inc., DBA, Stars Bar, William Suter Agent, Xander Inc., DBA, Cozy Corner, Scott Nelson Agent, Landon Inc., DBA, Mama Maria's Restaurante, Anne Marie Burr Agent, Seasons Tavern, BBC LLC, DBA, Seasons Tavern, Carol Reber's Agent, and Zappa and Zappa, DBA, Muds and Suds, Mark Zappa Agent, as recommended by the village clerk. All license approvals are contingent upon any outstanding payment obligations to the village being satisfied.
Thank you, Colleen. Second?
Second.
Thank you, George. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there any abstentions?
You abstained, Mark.
Yeah, I meant, waiting for...
Thank you, Mark. You got that, Melissa, the abstention?
Yes.
Okay. Tobacco sales license over the counter.
I'll move to approve the over the counter tobacco sales licenses for the Village Inn, Malloo Inn, Stars Bar, Village Liquor Store, and Freedom Value Center with an effective date of July 1st, 2013 through June 30th through 2014, as recommended by the village clerk.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Coin operated amusement license.
Go ahead, Mr. Klein.
(laughing). Thanks, Paul. Motion to approve the coin operated amusements license for Malloo Inn, Stars Bar, Village Inn, Seasons Tavern, Muds and Suds, Cozy Corner, with an effective date of July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014, as recommended by the village clerk. Thank you, George.
Second.
Thank you, Paul. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
I'll abstain again, Stan.
Mark is abstaining. Thank you, Mark. Next item on the agenda, fireworks permit. Application for Mark Zappa, Vegas at one fireworks approval requested. Can I have a motion for approval? Can he write that? Oh, there it is.
Move to approve the application of the fireworks paraphernalia sale permit for Mark Zappa, subject to the approval from the appropriate Hudson Fire Department representatives, and with the following inclusions: No smoking signs must be displayed, fire extinguishers available, no fireworks sold to person or persons under the age of 18. Permit length to be July 1st, 2013, June 30th, 2014.
Thank you, George. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
I'll abstain again.
And then we have one abstention. Okay. This is the item on the agenda. Amended Class B liquor license for extended premises, Cozy Corner Relay for Life fundraiser on 10 June 2013. Little history there, there'll be a fundraiser for the relay of life, Team Simon. There's an all you can eat pizza buffet to raise money for Team Simon. We're asking for permission to allow outside drinking in a fenced off area. And the timeframe of the drinking will be 3:30 PM, 10:00 PM, fencing off an area between Cozy South Side, Freedom North Side. Fence will be orange construction fence, and it'll be connected to barricades. Fence will be 75 by 55 feet. Fence will be put up Monday, taken down Monday night. This is a similar permit that we've had for extensions. The chief has recommended that with the following conditions: That the area outside of the building to be completely enclosed with fence and extended premises access from only within the building. Use of alcohol shall remain within the building or fenced in area per the establishment's liquor license. Use of outside area only with specific permission of the village board for requested date and times. Owner to provide equal amount of adjacent substitute off street parking while the parking lot is fenced during the time of the event. Owner to be responsible for banned music volume. All outside music to end lonated no later than 10:00 PM. And I don't believe there is going to be any music at this event. It is, you know, the Relay for Life, which is a cancer benefit, so...
I'll move approval, Stan.
Thank you, Mark. Second. Paul, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, Resolution 2013-07, Department of Natural Resources Review of Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, CMR, approval requested. Every year, we've got to jump through the hoops of the DNR and make sure that we are in compliance with our sewer and water, I believe sewer and water. What's that?
Sanitary sewer.
Sanitary sewer.
You could have Mark introduce that if you want.
Mark, you want to give us some background then?
Based on the latest available retirement, we go back to the past year, give any information regarding its activities in the sanitary sewer, or for that investigation failures, basically, any sort of backups. And I actually have announced, unfortunately, I can't say next year, but compliance from our board, myself, and my boardroom, where it was during the financial part of the report, we submit to be stated.
And it sounds like you did a very good job, because I see on the back page of the form, we received a grade of A for financial management and a grade of A for collection system, so that you get a 4.0 grade point, so we are in compliance with the DNR.
Stan, can I move to approve Resolution Number 2013-07?
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Colleen, okay. Thank you, Colleen. And since this is a resolution, we'll do a roll call vote. Paul.
Aye.
Aye?
Yes.
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 Okay. The next item on the agenda, number eight, proclamation naming July 13 through 21, 2013, as St. Croix River Awareness and Cleanup Week. This was brought to us by the friends of the St. Croix River, the county group, Mr. Malek and other area river communities and stuff are joining in the River Awareness and Cleanup Week. And there's a lot of whereas. The whereas the St. Croix River watershed or basin encompasses 7,760 square miles, over two dozen major subwatersheds, and hundreds of small district tributaries straddling the Minnesota-Wisconsin border. And whereas millions of tourists visit annually in support of thriving tourist industry, and hundreds of thousands of boaters, anglers, and quiet sports enthusiasts enjoy the water. And whereas 3 million people thrive in or near the basin and claim that the St. Croix Valley is central to their quality of life. And whereas the basin is at the intersection of three biomes, the northern boreal forest, the prairie, and deciduous forest, and home to at least 40 species of native mussels. It is a major migration corridor for the hundreds of species of waterfall and other birds. And whereas it is the historical border of the Dakota and Ojibwe nations, and the location of many historical states and structures. And whereas the upper St. Croix and Nemecoggin rivers are among the first eight named in the United States Wild and Scenic River System. Lake St. Croix was designated an impaired water for excessive phosphorus in 2008. Two major tributaries, the Sunrise and Willow, were similarly designated. American Rivers calls it one of the 10 most endangered. And whereas, without volunteer efforts, the St. Croix basin will continue to degrade. And now therefore, I stand wecan by the virtue of the authority vested in me as village president of the Village of North Hudson, do hereby proclaim the week of July 13 through 21, 2013, as St. Croix River Awareness and Cleanup Week, and encourage everyone to celebrate, engage in voluntary cleanup of the riverbank litter. I guess this is...
It doesn't really require a vote other than support through your proclamation, but you could just declare it under your executive powers.
Okay. But since I would hope everybody would be in favor of trying to keep our river, and I consider it our river, I've lived here for 59 years almost, so, clean, and it is in need of some tender loving care down there, if anybody fishes the banks and stuff like that, so if I could... All in favor of the proclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? None? Thank you, everyone, for that. Next item on the agenda, revision to municipal bond schedule discussion and possible approval. I see there are judges here. Ben, if you would like to take the podium, and please enlighten us on the need and/or reason for these increases, or revisions.
President and board members and village officials, the state ordinance, statute 800-3 and the Village Ordinance 26-3, Subparagraph A, say that periodically, the municipal judge is supposed to present a bond schedule for your approval. And that hasn't been done now for, I think, at least two years. And the process that I go through is that I have the clerk of court solicit the bond schedule from the surrounding communities. And I believe, I hope you all have a copy of the bond schedule being proposed. We looked at some of the local communities and tried to distinguish how they are different than we are, and adjust our bond schedule accordingly. And we have not reduced the forfeitures on any of these violations. What we have done is increased some of them to match mostly Hudson or New Richmond. We don't want to become an attraction for people to come here and get a lesser fine for doing something that they would get a steeper fine in a surrounding community. So outside of the lines you see are the new proposed forfeiture amounts. So if you look at the first one, carrying concealed weapon, that used to be $177, we raised that to $240. And if you go down the line, you'll see all of the others that are somewhat similar. And you'll see that for discharge of fireworks, we're at the same rate now as Hudson, if you approve this schedule. The jumping off the bridge is slightly cheaper in North Hudson, but not all that much. And hopefully, we're not going to see flocks of people coming, jumping off our side of the bridge. I would guess that there's probably about 20 changes that have been made, maybe 25. And as I say, all of those are increases to be consistent kind of with surrounding communities. And if you were to approve this bond schedule that it's presented, then Chief Richard would have his officers start writing under the new bond schedule. Are there any questions that I can address?
No, I'm guessing with the carry concealed, that's, you know, that is for people that aren't permit holders?
Illegally carrying a gun.
Illegally carrying...
Yeah, because I didn't get a chance to look at all the different sections. You'd notice the carrying firearm in a public building, there's no other communities other than ours that have that forfeiture.
And the fact that you have all of these potential forfeitures don't mean they're going to be written.
Okay.
Very few of these, as a matter of fact, are, do we see very often. The ones you see most are traffic violations, we see marijuana, we see marijuana paraphernalia, underage alcohol, and disorderly conduct are probably the most common ones.
Right, and that was going to be my next question, is was there a reason, I mean, you know, I mean, do we need to amp them up, I guess, in order to discourage the people from, or pay a little better attention, I guess, but...
And I try to be somewhat consistent with the other communities, recognizing the differences. Somerset, of course, has a wholly different situation, so I don't usually look at Somerset's too closely with the water activities there and the large number of auxiliary officers they have. You see a lot different violations and a lot more of them, and usually more serious. They have some for campground violations that go to $2,600 for a citation. I also try to distinguish between River Falls, which has the university population, which makes it a different animal, so... So I think I probably hone most closely to New Richmond and Hudson when I'm looking at the comparative schedules.
Ben, I didn't realize that you actually, as the judge, actually set these rates, and these, this is the way that the board approves your recommended bonds. Is that correct?
Under Chapter 26, Paragraph 3A, I present the bond schedule, and the board has to approve it before it becomes effective.
But it's initiated by you.
Correct. Well, I'm initiated according to the statute. I'm required to do that by the state statute.
Is there ever a, is there ever a time when it would be the board that would recommend changes to you?
You can always recommend changes. I will listen to the board, and if I think that it's appropriate, and it's something that surrounding communities also have addressed, we would certainly give that serious consideration. You'll notice a lot of the language is different. I can't do comparisons on a lot of these violations, because they're stated differently, or they have slightly different ramifications of the communities, the way they interpret them. So I try to go kind of across the board and do a general one that I think serves the community best.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any of the board members? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Ben.
You're welcome.
Is there a...
I'll move to approve the municipal bond schedule as presented in our board packet.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Colleen.
Further discussion?
Okay, any further discussion for, on the board? Hearing none. All, we'll start a roll call vote on this. George, you want to start?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, approval. Now we come to item 10, public hearing. We will open the public hearing on the special assessments for public improvements along the access road into the shopyards. We'll, let's see, the agenda is set up for, we open the hearing, we will have, and we will have, I think, our engineers here, so Kevin can give us a little overview, and then we will allow public comments. And I would hope, there seems to be a large amount of folks, if we could limit it to five minutes each, or if you have someone that's going to speak for a group, or as we've received notes, we go through that, then we'll close the public hearing, and we would take any possible action on the recommendations. So, Kevin, if you'd like to give us some history.
All right. Thank you, Stan. I believe everybody's got a copy of the preliminary assessment report that we have put together for the shopyards, sanitary sewer and water main improvements. As part of that project, there is going to be, the access road is going to be improved. It's going to be basically with the underground utilities, it'll be completely lost during the construction, so we're going to have to replace that. And with that, according to the village assessment policy, we typically, since it's over 20 years old, the village has the authority to special assess 50% of that cost back to the benefiting property owners. So I guess I can just go quickly through the report, kind of hit the highlights of it, and then we can open it up to any comments or questions that property owners would have. So on the second page, again, street reconstruct, over 20 years, 50% of that cost is going to be assessed. There's nine benefiting property owners down in, down in the shopyards area. Sanitary sewer services, water main and services, all that cost is going to be picked up by the village. So none of those improvements will be assessed to any of the property owners. The village has sinking fund that they allocate dollars every year into and use those towards these types of projects. So I think everybody's aware, you know, we've discussed this in somewhat great detail of what the need is down there. You know, we're looking for better fire protection, better water quality. Sewer in the, in the past, up on the north end, has had some history of freezing. It is fairly shallow. As part of the third street project, we actually lowered the sanitary sewer in there for anticipation of these improvements down the road. So when we do go through and reconstruct it, the northern one will go from three feet deep to be in about eight to nine feet deep. So we'll actually, you know, be increasing the depth of that area to avoid any, you know, future issues with any freezing. Page four is the assessment district, Schedule A. And as you can see, there's nine parcels that are going to be affected, one of them being the Village of Woodville, or Village of North Hudson, excuse me. They do have a park down in that area, so they are included in the, in this assessment Page five gives you a breakdown. We're anticipating the overall cost with construction, engineering, contingency, and admin of being about $460,000. And again, these are estimates. We still have to go out and bid the project. And at the end, if these costs come in under, we won't have to go through a public hearing. But if it does end up going higher than what's anticipated in Schedule C, then it'll have to be another public hearing process, and then there'll be a final assessment report that's generated. And those will be the, you know, that's after the construction's done, we have all the final numbers in, then we'll generate the final assessment report. Those will be the final numbers that'll be assessed to the property owner. Page six gives you an idea based on what the assessments are going to be. It gives the owners the option of paying those over a period of time, depending on what the value is going to be for each parcel. You can see it ranges from basically no installments, you know, if it's up to $200, anything up to $35,000 would be 20 years. Right at the bottom of page six, that gives you an idea of how many dollars we're looking at special assessing. Again, it's 50%, so when you include 50% of the construction costs, contingency and engineering, we're looking at about $64,000 anticipated.
Kevin, I need to interrupt right there. When you talk about the engineering costs, do those engineering costs include both the asphalt as well as the sewer and water?
Yes.
The sewer and water engineering costs, wouldn't they be covered by our, our fund, our sinking fund?
Yep.
So then the asphalt part of the engineering, is that what would be included for the benefactors and not the sewer and water aspect?
Correct.
I want to make that clear to the board, so they understand that.
Good clarification. So, so from there, you know, we needed to decide how we were going to special assess these parcels. And included in the packet is a memorandum that I'd put together that we discussed at the last Public Works meeting a couple weeks ago. You know, there is a bunch of different methodologies that we have used in the past for other street projects within the village. And we talked about doing it on a per unit basis, basically taking the whole project, dividing it by nine to come up with a value. We looked at basing it on the front footage. Another method that we looked at was taking the square footage of all the lots and dividing that cost out. And I provided a spreadsheet to give the public works an idea of, you know, how those costs would vary with the different methodologies that we would use. After that meeting, they did make a recommendation that they would want to look at basing the special assessment report off of a per unit basis. That's, that's what this is generating. what this is generating. So, go page seven. That gives you an idea of the assessment rate. So, each parcel, based on a per-unit basis, would be looking at about seven thousand one hundred and fifty dollars per unit. And if you look back to page six into the table, that amount, they would be allowed to pay that over a nine-year period if they choose to do so. There is a rate that the village would add on to that, kind of a financial charge. I think it's three percent for the borrowing and another one and a half admin cost. It's maybe...
It's the one and a half, but we don't know what the percentage, the borrowing would be.
Okay. So, that'll be yet to be determined.
Can I ask a question?
We should wait till Kevin's done.
We will wait until Kevin's done, then you can, we'll have a chance to ask questions.
That was good. That was good. Are you done?
I'll just, I got a few other things, but I'll make it, make it quick. So, page nine's, schedule C. Again, that just shows you all the different parcels. Again, nine of them. Each one, what we're proposing to be is around just over seventy-one hundred dollars. And then, you know, pages eleven and twelve is just an itemized, you know, as part of the whole project, all the different items, you know, sanitary sewer, water main, the street reconstruction, and then there's the walking path up on the north end for the water main's gonna be, for the looping purposes. We're gonna end up losing that during construction and, you know, what that cost is gonna be to replace that. And then there's a, you know, a copy of the public hearing notice, along with the preliminary resolution that was adopted by the village board here in May. So, summary, that's, you know, the report as a whole, and if we can open that up to any comments or questions.
Thank you, Ben.
I have a quick question, Kevin.
Sure.
On page five, you have the walking trail repairs, eight thousand three hundred and fifty thousand, or eight thousand three hundred and fifty. And on page seven, ten thousand twenty, at our park board meeting, which we'll get to later, we had decided, since that was supposed to be coming out of park fund, that we would be going with the cheaper one and just have the kind of a pea gravel rather than the complete asphalt. So, that number will not be the eight thousand.
Actually, this is just basically replacing what's out there right now. So, any, if you were gonna add the asphalt to it, it actually would be more.
Oh, okay. I get it. Thank you for that.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Coming on the methodology, if you go back to the preliminary report, preliminary resolution, excuse me, you, you lay out the different methodologies for assessment. You lay it out by square footage, you lay it out by linear frontage?
Yep.
And by, you know, equal units?
Yep.
And did that then go to the committee and the committee looked them over and made a recommendation? Is that where you're at?
Yeah.
Do you know what was some of their thinking on why they, the committee went that way?
Well, they looked at, you know, as a whole, you know, they thought that everybody is part of that, for the access road down there is as equal, I guess, responsibility or ownership for any maintenance and repair, if it, you know, if it was gonna be reconstructed.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the sewer and water is why we're having to do it. You know, the one benefit that the owners have is, is, you know, if they were gonna have to actually do their improvements, they'd have to pay a hundred percent of it. You know, as part of the project, fifty percent of it's the village is picking up, even though they're actually picking up a little bit more than that because they're included as part of the assessment district. They have one parcel down there. So, I think you, I mean, you need to look at that, too.
Okay, so that was the, sort of the rationale of the committee, yeah?
Yep. And we talked about...
I wanna throw out some more input on this. First thing is, according to the village assessment policy, I think I read every page of this book, trying to find the village assessment policy. Do you know where that policy is?
It is right here.
Second, separate document.
Oh, it's not in here?
It's a separate doc, yeah.
Yeah.
No wonder I couldn't find it. All right. That having been said, I am on Public Works and yes, I was at those, the two meetings where we talked about this most recently, while I was a member of the Public Works. Prior to that, I remember that we had been talking about this project for a long time. And what kicked it off was the fire in December of two thousand eight. And I remember it as if it was yesterday. Cold bitter, a bitter cold, early, early morning. And I had the greatest fear that my Corvette was going up in smoke, 'cause that's the way it looked from my front door. And so, this is not something new. We've been talking about this for a long time and it finally started coming to a head with the last two Public Works meetings, at which time there were very few of you guys there, very few. I wondered if anybody cared. That having been said, I didn't like what we came up with and what the Public Works decision was because I felt it was very unfair. It was unfair for the little guy, and the little guy over here is the guy with the bad memory, who has a couple of really light little trucks and he's got a motorcycle. And it, when you compare it with St. Croix Storage or Ventures, excuse me, with the big trucks going back and forth, I, it just, it bothered me a little bit. When I saw the size of some of the properties, even though it represents a unit, and then I looked at Nick's little unit, I go, wait a minute, there's something wrong with this. There's gotta be a better way. There's gotta be another formula for coming up with this. I don't know what that formula is, but I think these gentlemen here tonight are gonna come up with some recommendations to us, so that it will be more fair, more equitable to everybody. I know that there are a couple guys out here, I don't know this for all of them, but there are a couple guys out here who, this is a real financial burden on them. And that seventy-four hundred dollars, that's, that's a big ticket item. Gentlemen, for the hundred feet of property that I have up here on Helen Street, that cost me five thousand, for a project I didn't want at all. I didn't want sidewalks, I didn't want curb, and I didn't want gutter. And I got it, it was rammed down my throat, and I know how that feels. And that was five grand out of my pocket. So, I just want you to notice some empathy here. And so, with that, I'll shut up for a little while.
Okay, for a little while. Okay, Nick, do you still remember your question that you're gonna ask?
The seven thousand dollars you brought, is that an assumption?
That's based on estimated numbers.
Go ahead.
Basically, we look at bids, you know, bids, projects that we...
The seventy-four thousand dollars, is that an assumption?
It's based on an estimate. It's based on what we typically see in the market right now for what, let's say asphalt, for a three-inch man of asphalt, what's that going for, based on projects that we have bid already. And again, from here, you know, if the special assessment report is approved, then the next step will actually be to bid the project out.
Is there any chance of putting a not to exceed whatever that figure ends up at? Why?
Let me, let me clear one thing up, though, Kevin. That's an estimate based on your estimate. The actual amount of the assessment will be the actual amount based on the cost of the actual project. It won't be based on the estimate, it'll be based on the actual cost of the project. So, what you're trying to do is just get us as close to your estimate as you possibly can at this time.
And that's why...
If it's over, it has, we have to have another meeting on it.
We have to have another public hearing meeting.
But if it's under, we don't.
After the actual contracts are in?
Actually, everything is done and completed. We have all the final numbers in, all the final costs.
Okay, another related question. Can you get not to exceed contracts from your subcontractors? Why?
Yeah, we can. We've done that before.
Based on, you know, the referendum.
We did that on two other projects. We've done that before.
They came back to bite us in the butt.
Any bids not to exceed a certain amount?
The way, the way we set up the bids is, we come up with an estimated quantity of, like, how many linear feet of sanitary sewer are gonna be putting in, how much linear feet of water main. The unit price that they put in, the bid, is the controlling factor.
The way you can handle that is, at, at the end of the day, you have to go through the bidding process and the bids come in, and if you don't like any of them, you just don't accept any of them. You say, well, they've exceeded what we wanted, so we don't, we'll bid again, or we, whatever.
I'm just saying, I know two other projects we did a not to and exceed amount, and they both came in under that not to exceed amount.
Yeah.
Anyway, the, I have a real basic question is, why are we doing the asphalt?
Because, you know, the utilities are underneath the existing access road.
Okay.
So, you know, when we dig it all up...
I got that.
The road surface is gonna be lost.
But it, it's not our road, right?
No, it's a private, it's a private road.
So...
Private access road. Yep.
That's a good point.
Why don't we, why not leave it, let, let, let the owners put the road back? It's not much, we're not, they're not losing much there, any much for a road there now. I mean, and it seems to be a point of contention, why get involved in it at all?
Can I ask you a question? Who paved that road in the beginning?
Oh, gee.
That was so many years ago.
The railroad?
Somebody should know.
I can, I can tell you did St. Croix Storage and Transfer paid for that.
Okay, so it was a dirt...
Because it started as gravel.
Okay.
And then over the years, that is actually not, there's actually not asphalt that's there, other than the patches that are put in to take care of the really big holes. What is there is actually multiple layers over the years of hot oil and blue trap. If you look at it, it's literally three-quarters inch thick with, with a substandard base on it at this point.
Shouldn't you just be required to put it back the way it's found it?
Basically, that's what we'd be doing. I mean, there's a hard surface, right?
A lot more.
There's, there's a hard surface there right now. It was part of the easement agreements that you have in place. You know, we're allowed to go in, do our work, but we have to restore it back to original conditions.
So, but we're paying, the village is paying for half, and we're paying for half of that restoration.
But, yeah, I mean, we, we gotta look at the longevity of the road down there with the truck traffic and things. According to, you know, standards that we see out there for truck traffic, for industrial park areas, you want a minimum of three inches of asphalt.
I understand all that, but if it's, if it's a requirement back to where it was, I mean, you, you tear up my yard and you have to come and side it up and whatever, and you're not charging me half of that, the utility company is part of the bid.
You would, you would still have to put some kind of, you know, it's a hard surface down there right now. So, you'd have to put some kind of an asphalt surface down there. I just can't see, I don't think you guys would wanna have a gravel surface down there.
You don't need to do three inches. I'll tell you that right now. I built a building out in Robertson. I only put two inches down and it survived for many years, 'cause I couldn't afford seventy thousand dollars to do the second top.
Just a second. The, I wanna get back to this.
Oh, you know what? We, if, if this conversation continues, they really should be addressed up there so we can get the names into the records and...
I'd still like to go back and address the need for the asphalt. I understand getting it back to a reasonable shape that it's in now, and just by Dan's testimony and from what I've seen in the history down there, there's no way to really reconstruct it to that sort of shape. So, we're forced to put in new asphalt...
Right.
...to make it restored, if you will. But at what point do the owners of the property have the right to say, I don't, we don't want asphalt, we can't afford it, we'd like to put maybe trap rock down there? Is that within their purview?
It's, it's within the board's purview, Mark, to decide what to do. The engineer makes recommendations based on what the engineering firm thinks is the best option here, but the decision on what to do is up to the board. The decision on how to assess, what getting at is, and all of that.
Yeah.
The sewer and water is clearly an issue and we're, we have some standards that we have to abide by there. Okay? Now, we're talking about the reconstruction of a, of a roadway that really isn't a street, correct?
It's a private access.
It's a shared, it's a private drive, it's a private road.
Yep.
And at that point, if we're stumbling over an asphalt cost that exceeds the owner's willingness to pay, wouldn't it, I don't see the need for us to mandate anything more than what they might desire, what they might call to be good enough.
Right. If, if they only want up to a gravel surface, we'd be more willing to leave that there.
Can I?
I mean, you need, you need to put some...
Wait a second. I wanna address Colin's comment. What?
That's not, we don't have just...
Okay, I understand that. But at this certain point, we have to fix the utilities there. And so, so it's, the, to put it back in the way you had it is gonna be impossible, physically impossible. And we have one choice, put in two, three inches of asphalt, or perhaps just crush rock. But the sewer and water has to go in down there.
Yeah, I get that.
Okay, so the disruption is inevitable. At this point, the only real thing to decide is what level of reconstruction would you like? That's the way it appears to be. So, to pretend that we can put it back in that sort of form is, is, is impossible.
Yep.
It's, it's gonna be a consequence of the construction. And what I'm trying to figure out here is a way to get, since it is a private shared road, is if we don't need to be involved in that sort of discussion, why don't we just walk away from it?
Kevin, I have a question for you.
Sure.
It's a private road.
It is private road.
Will, do those, do we have an easement for the water and sewer?
Yes, we do. Yep.
And you have an easement to the access to the park, correct?
Yeah.
It's actually one of the property owners.
Yes.
It's one of the property owners, so they have an easement going through.
I, I guess, you know, and follow up with Mark, and this is something that I triggered when, when I heard this earlier. I did not know that was a private road. I'm not sure we can do a special assessment on a private, private road. I would wanna look into that a little bit before that decision is made.
And just, we, we gotta, in order, my, our clerk is having a hard time keeping up with who's speaking and whatever. So, now, if you'd please, if you're gonna address the board and Kevin, if you could step up to the mic, state who you are and your property or whatever, so that we can identify who is making the comments, that would help us a lot. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Stan, is a kind of a compromise. I don't mind. I'll grab the, the mic that Melissa has and just get it out there. Would that help?
That would be fine. Thank you, George. Good idea.
They're just sitting there?
Well, we get...
All right, get them up to the podium, really. The podium works best. It's the best way. Otherwise, they'll be passing it all over. Does anybody have something to say? They should just address the podium in an orderly fashion, please.
You got a board?
Well...
I lost that a little while ago, you know.
My name is Ben Hanke. I am the owner of Call the Donna, which is the company that owns the property where BOH Electronics works out of. And so, I've been an owner down there for four years now. And I've done quite a bit of improvements to my property, certified historic rehab, work with the Historic Society of Wisconsin, the National Park Services to do that. And I wanna make sure we're looking at the property and, and giving it the respect it deserves, being it's a national historic monument in the Wisconsin, in the, in the state. Last thing I'd wanna do is see solid roads get turned into gravel roads with dust flying up and down and everywhere around. It's a beautiful area, a beautiful area to visit, beautiful buildings down there. And it is a historical landmark in the state of Wisconsin. When I looked at the numbers, with the property I personally own, I have a fair amount of linear footage versus the size of my building. Square footage-wise, it's pretty similar to other lots. I know there were some discussions about how the cost could be split up. I was in favor of two options. One, splitting it up evenly amongst the property owners. The reason I would advocate that is based on the fact that we all have access to those roads, the fact that, you know, this is a four hundred and sixty thousand dollar project in total. And to me, it's the water and sewer that are driving, needing the replacement of the roads. And at the same time, I can understand some of the smaller landowners, and I can understand where that doesn't seem completely fair. So, another option I threw out at a, at a, we had a property owners' meeting down in the park, I think a week or two ago. And one idea I threw out was, what about taking an average of those three costs? And one idea I threw out was, what about taking an average of those three costs? And, and coming up with it that way. And at that point, it sounded like, I think all the property owners other than one were on board with that, and the one property owner wasn't sure at that point, of, of saying, hey, let's take an average of those three numbers. And what that did is it, it, it helped out the little guys down there, brought their costs down to about half of that seven thousand dollars number. And in my instance, it brought my number from seven up to around ten or eleven. Um, and I thought that was a fair possibility. I don't know if that's feasible, if, if that's, i- i- if the board's able to even go that direction, or if you have to choose one of the three. But it was an option, and something we had talked about as owners down there, and, and a compromise that we thought sounded pretty fair amongst us. I know there may be some of us that are for just leaving it gravel, and, and others that are for having it paved. I, myself, I think it'd be a travesty to, to just leave gravel down there, um, because it just turns into a dusty mess. And, uh, I hate to see that happen. So, thanks for hearing me, appreciate it. Oh, I'm sorry, two thirty Monroe Street North. Colin Thorpe, SeaWorld Properties, uh, four hundred Monroe Street North. I'm wondering, first of all, did, did any of you, Melissa or Stan, did my wife emailed this letter yesterday? Did any of you get it? She was having some problem with the link because it was Becky's old one and wasn't working, so.
Everybody was given something tonight, I'm not sure.
Yeah, mine wasn't.
That's a different one.
Mine wasn't on it. Can you make a copy?
I will do that right now.
Okay.
I've got a block on most of your stuff anyway, Colin. Can I ask at eight, who was at Public Works the last month? Was every, were, were all you folks at Public Works at?
Oh, yeah, it was.
At the Public Works meetings? Okay, just two?
No, that's, uh, Go ahead, Mark.
I'll, I'll, I'll let everybody speak, but it just really sounded like a Public Works meeting to me, I mean, we're.
No, well, George has expressed some concern, uh, you know, with fairness and stuff from Public Works. There was only two of the members there that were at Public Works, and, uh, you know.
I was in Chicago the last one.
And Paul wasn't available to be there. And right now, Terry hasn't had a chance to review our assessment policy, and, and he's got some case law that he wants to look at to determine, you know, the, you know.
The extent we can work on a private road.
What we can do on a private road. Uh, so, uh, I think, you know, and I very much appreciate everybody that is here, but I would like to, do we, could I ta- can we table this or send it back to Public Works now?
I won't vote on it tonight.
No, I would, I would not vote either, I mean, because there is, you know, I want, you know.
Yes.
I want Terry to look at it.
I need, you need to go back to Public Works, and there's some questions here, and your concern is heard here. It's just not the right time to be doing this, um, this, this end of it.
Yeah, and we'll get a chance to look at.
At Public Works, we can dig into it.
At Colin's letter, and, uh.
But you have to show up at the meeting. Not, not, no, not just come to the board meeting.
I didn't know about that.
Okay, all right. You don't go to the Public Works meeting, you can't come to the board meeting. Yeah, we'll be stamping your hand.
Yeah, I, he can't, he can't paint fingers or anything like that.
But you know what I mean, go there.
No.
Can, can I ask a couple things?
You gotta close the public hearing first.
Dan Barber, uh, representing Saint Croix Ventures. Um, I have three property addresses down there, two oh seven, two fifteen, and two thirty nine Monroe Street North. If it's going to go back to the Public Works Committee, and, and, and I, and I know Terry, you're going to be looking into some stuff. I guess then the determination, maybe you could come to a determination, if, if the village is going to be involved, what's, you know, how far is the involvement going to be? And if not, how is the project going to be left? Is it going to be left, you know, based on the, the estimates that Kevin proposed, minus the asphalt? Because, you know, at best you said, or, you know, you'd go at least back to an asphalt, or a crushed rock base. And, you know, so how far would that village involvement go, would be my, my question.
And to give you a sense of that, if, if we don't have a right to actually redo the road, we do have a right to dig a hole, do whatever we need to do with our easement on the sewer and water, and then try to put it that back i- as close to what it was when we're done.
Correct, okay.
You know, patching in what you have down there, no, it wouldn't include all the way from fourth street.
All the way down, right. Thank you.
Throw out something else here, too. We're talking about, uh, one of the things, one of the issues that you have, that we all have, is how it's going to get paid. And you're coming up with some suggestions, Ben, I appreciate the, the idea, the three. I, it, it seems to me that no matter what we come up with, not, you can't please all the people all the time. But if you can come up with a consensus of how you think it ought to be done, that would help Public Works come up with a recommendation to the board that the majority of us can live with. What do you want in that road? Now, you can say all you want about, well, return it to the way it was, but to par- what, uh, what Mark just said, that's almost an impossibility because it wasn't of a quality in the first place. So we can't provide you with the same poor quality. I don't know about you, but I don't work that way. I can't provide you with poor quality. I'm going to do my best to give you the best quality for the price, and so I throw it back to you. Would you rather pay the, pave the road yourselves? Would you rather take, I'm not saying we'd do it this way, but would you rather take, have the village do a hands-off, and you get together and hire your own asphalt paving company to do it? Because that is an alternative.
I think that's where, we won't, I think that's where we have the large trouble.
Exactly.
I'll just add, I'll just add, and on, based on that, George, what you'd said is, when we met as owners, um, last week, and there were the three price pro- pro- proposals of how to assess based on, even division, lineal square footage, and, um, lot size. And I understand that combining the three, what, what we came up with is combining the three, dividing it by three per, per parcel, and that's what it came out to. Just to put that into real numbers, for the three properties that I have, and these are round figures, but, um, three lots times three is about twenty one thousand dollars. Or three lots times seven is about twenty one thousand dollars. If it were factored by, um, lineal square footage, my cost was approximately twenty four thousand dollars. If it was by, based on lot size, it was thirty eight thousand dollars. When we added those three numbers up, divided them by three, it brought my cost to twenty eight thousand dollars. So kind of a, right in there. But for the small property owners, it took their high number, medium number, low number, and it gave them a number that we thought at the time was workable. So it went up for some, for, for, uh, for, uh, Ben, it went up for, Ben and myself, it went up for sure. Um, for other, for the little ones, it went down. And I, and I think Lee's building was about, was about, uh, the same, no matter what. So just to kind of put that into perspective of what it meant to all of us combined.
They bring that back to Public Works, right?
Well, just, just in, just protocol here, we are in a public hearing, and we just need to finish that. So every member of the public who wants to speak should given an op- be given the opportunity to speak. I agree that, you know, we've, we've come to some momentum here to, to move it back to Public Works, but at least tonight, in this public hearing, everybody needs to be given a chance to speak.
Uh, Lee Golkey, it's, uh, two thirty five Monroe Street. Two things, uh, it seems to me that this issue about what, um, what, um, legal, um, what legal, uh, right the village has to do work or, um, assess repairs on the road, that seems to be pri- prior to everything else that we're going to try to decide right now. So it, it seems to me that, that, um, until you get an idea what, if we have a group meeting to try to come up with some proposal that we all agree on, we have to first know what, um, the legal status of the whole situation is. And then the second thing I have personally is that, um, as I understand, the, um, the actual location of the sewer and water, um, has been moved over onto my property from maybe it was in the center of the road before, or?
Sewer and water was not parallel to each other. And with the new construction, we want to have them, well, tend through the park offset.
Okay.
So we're looking at, um, forgiving or releasing the existing easement for, for the new easement.
And do I understand right that, um, if I wanted to put a loading dock on the front of my building or something, I couldn't do that because, um, the new easement would interfere with that?
We'd have to look at where your particular parcel is in relationship where we have the old easement. We have exhibits for all that to show you, like, how far away from the building would be.
I, I can respond to that a little bit, too. The, the easement, the new easement, you guys have to agree to that. Or, and then, and then the village would give up the old easement in exchange for that. Or we build it in the old place, or there's, there's always the power of eminent domain, which means we can go in and do it, but we have to pay you for it. So those are the three options.
Okay.
That the village has. Or we leave it where it was.
Right.
Or we use eminent domain and pay you for it.
I just wanted to understand that for sure.
Yeah.
Thanks, Lee. Anyone else care to?
I won't read my letter, but read it. And, um, no, it's just a matter of, you know, we have such small frontages and, yeah, will we benefit? Absolutely. Will it be nice to have a nice new, uh, blacktop road? Absolutely. Do we all want to, you know, pay for it? Your hundred front, uh, foot of frontage there costs you five grand, well, mine's, you know, seventy one. And the other thing that I'm addressing in here is that, you know, I have two entrances, and the front of my building is really on Saint Croix Street, as well as, um, you can get through the shopyards, through the mini storage. And so, let's throw that in the ring. Well, across the drive from, um, uh, from Monroe there, from my property, my little flag lot with the two big cedar trees, there's a place for a duplex there. Those people aren't going to be included. Do they have, will they receive benefit? Yes. Directly, no, because their address is on Fourth Street, you know? But if we're gonna throw everything in, let's throw everything in and make sure we are, is, is, is my point. You know, well.
That, that's about it.
Thanks, Colin.
Well, I was just going to remind everybody, if, if you, all these things will be direct, we're basically going to table this tonight, so. Comment, save your, you know, solutions or comments, probably for the next Public Works meeting with, because we're not going to be voting on anything tonight. We all understand a little bit of the roadblock we're at now, so.
Good choice of words.
Hi, everybody, I'm John Van Est, I own, uh, two forty Monroe. So, uh, you know, I, I picked up that old building, and I, I had to look at it two ways. Should I tear it down, rebuild, or should I add money to it? I dumped in a lot of money to start a company again, okay? You can pretend my life is starting over, I'm starting back from the bottom. Uh, anybody's been through a divorce, you understand. I'm trying to bring back a company, I'm trying to bring jobs to North Hudson. If you know my past, I had rented, uh, from John, uh, Shomer, in the old railroad yards back in nineteen ninety. That's when we first started growing in business, and I went from probably ten employees to sixty employees in that building. Outgrew that building and moved out of there because of the fact that we couldn't expand or anything, so. I have the same vision, again, I mean, I, I want to get back to that level, I want to get back to that plane. But starting off in business, you gotta watch your monies, you gotta watch what you're putting in. I need machinery, I need improvements on my building, I need to make exp- expanding building. When, when I found out about that seventy one hundred dollars, I was like, wow, I wish I could take that money and throw it into my company and buy some tooling for the end of this year, or, or even pave my own driveway that I, I would like to have paved, but I, I can't, you know? And I started thinking about it, we, we talked about it the other night, um, all of us, and, so I'm starting thinking about, uh, the buildings I used to have. I built a building in Roberts that was three point five million dollars, and I built it around other buildings that were probably a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand. And I said to myself after I did that, that wasn't a real smart thing, I paid the highest taxes, that's my own fault. So I, I look at that, I look at the land value. Land value goes up all the time, okay? My small acreage is only going to go up so much. People have large acreage, goes up a lot more. They're, they're, they're gaining every year, okay? As taxes, as you build a building, or you, uh, remodel it, you're appraised at, at, at the value, okay? Why isn't it this job, if we're going to put asphalt in, assessed on acreage? Because in the long term, more people have bigger property, in the long term, is going to make more money. So, that's my opinion, if it has to be. I want to see the park improve, if I didn't, I wouldn't have done that to my building. And I really do, I love that place, it's like, it's funny that I'm back here again, but, but there's a, a meaning behind it. And, and I just want to, I want to be a successful company again, you know, and to me, if, if I can get my business going and wait a couple of years, I'd, I'd, any extra cash, I'd throw right at that pavement, you know what I mean? But when you don't have it, you can't do it, you know what I mean? So, that's my opinion about it, so. Thank you.
What would be the, uh, on the, I just looked up the sheet and it didn't give me the answer I was looking for, for this amount, for seven thousand dollars, stretched out over nine years, if I'm reading the chart right?
Right.
I'm sure that there is a, uh, there's a finance charge on that, some small amount. What is it?
You're thinking of four and a half?
He's thinking of a minimum of four.
Well, we don't know what the bank loan rate would be, but it'd be one point.
What's the nine year?
Per year.
It's going to be, you know, a thousand dollars.
It's about eight hundred bucks.
Eight hundred bucks a year.
Seven ninety four, I did the math earlier.
Seven ninety four?
Yep, without any financial.
Was there anyone else that would like to?
Yeah.
Now, wait a minute, I just wanted, that was per year?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
That's per year, eight hundred dollars per year, for nine years.
So, is there anybody else that'd like to comment, public, of the, for the open public hearing? If not, I would like to. I was just going to bring that up, thank you for leading me into that, that was very well done. Uh, the next Public Works meeting is the eighteenth of June at, uh, eighteen hundred or six P M. Paul Rhodey will be ten days older than he is on Saturday after that, uh, meeting, and he will be in attendance, I'm guessing. But I'd like to thank everyone, your comments, you know, will be, uh,
I'll move to close the public hearing.
I have a motion to close the public. I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Uh, thank you, Mark and Paul, uh, public hearing is closed.
Take a vote?
Okay, vote, uh, Paul?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Yes.
I'll move to, um, what, what were we voting on?
The, the, the report, the engineer's report.
I'll move to table the engineer's report.
You guys are getting a case of all you guys right here.
Okay.
We're making a motion for you guys right here.
Table the engineer's report and, um, and send this back to the.
Send, move to table the engineer's report and send it back to Public Works.
There's a second? George, thank you, uh, okay, um.
Any further discussion?
Any further discussion with the board? Hearing none?
Vote.
Vote.
We just did.
Oh, we'll get.
No, this is a second motion.
Second motion, alright, the next motion, uh, George?
Yes.
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 Yes, okay.
So we'll see you guys in a couple weeks.
Done, so you guys don't have to stick around if you don't wanna sit for the rest of this.
I, I think you should sit here.
You're welcome to stay here and, and see how local government works.
Yeah, yes, you're more than welcome to stay if you so choose.
I can see. Dan! It'll get taken care of.
Make, make sure you get all your comments in, in writing then, and.
Thank you, next. Okay.
You know, you'd look good right here.
Okay, item ten is over, item number eleven, new business from the board or staff. First would be president's comments, uh, yeah, gonna make these short, uh, I would like to, uh, just, uh, recognize Mark Volz, who's received a nice, uh, letter of, uh, as his, or commenting on his professionalism, and, uh, and, uh, uh, Mark, I don't know, you wanna make any more comment on that, what it, what it was all about, please, I mean, uh, just quick, you know, for, I think, you know, it's, uh, a lot of times you guys don't get compliments.
Yeah, I, I didn't bring the actual letter with me, I, I did forward it on to, uh, at least Stan and Gloria, uh, there was a, an email that was sent to me based on a traffic stop that Sergeant Volz had made to a citizen, uh, and I don't recall the violation of a stop sign or speed or whatnot, but, uh, complimented Sergeant Volz on his professionalism and said that his young son was in the vehicle with him, there had been a prior contact with law enforcement, I think Minnesota State Patrol, which did not go the same way, and his son had some, uh, concerns regarding, is that what police officers are like, is that how they speak, is that their demeanor? He basically congratulated and thanked Sergeant Volz for his demeanor during that traffic stop because his son's viewpoint or outlook on the professionalism of law enforcement, uh, has changed, and it was an opportunity for him to have a teaching moment with his son, so wanted to pass along that congratulations, like you mentioned, Stan, uh, and one of the things that it came from, I believe, was the email or the, uh, website that we have, and Stan's, uh, recommendation that we put the attaboy, uh, section on our North Hudson Police Department email, uh, I'm sorry, website, and so that's where he got the information on, on how to thank an officer for their, their positive activities, so congratulations, Sergeant Volz.
Yeah, thank you, Mark, uh, and the only other reminder, thing I would like to do is, uh, the, our, the children will be getting out of school soon, and they will be much more frequent out on the roads, and I would, I, you know, hope that the, uh, general public, I know they can, uh, they come blazing past my house, uh, at the, you know, kinda quickly, we've got a lot of kids running around there now at the park, so I'd appreciate it if everybody really paid attention to, uh, watch out for our children, and, uh, you know, and then motorcycles and, uh, and other bikers, too, if you would, please. It is the summer, let's keep everybody around. Administrator comments, Gloria, you got anything for us?
No.
Thank you, Gloria.
Okay, uh, Melissa, Village Clerk comments. We have nothing, thank you.
Fly it.
Hey, we're trying. Okay, Plan Commission did not meet, I don't believe. Personal and Finance Committee met briefly prior to this meeting, and, uh...
Stan, can I move to approve the May two thousand thirteen non-recurring claims totaling ten thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars and four cents?
Thank you, Mark, thank you, Paul, uh, spending issues, so Paul? Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you all for the, to pay our bills, uh...
Can I move the Director of Public Works job description as presented in our packets tonight?
Yes, you may. Is there a second? Thank you, George.
It was discussed at finance and approved there.
Thank you. Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, uh, we could have, uh, that's the recommendation, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, C.
Dan, can I, uh, move to authorize the village administrator to transfer twenty-five thousand dollars from the unassigned fund to the Public Works Truck Assigned Fund for the purchase of a new truck and skid loader, transfer fourteen thousand five hundred to the Police Vehicles Assigned Fund for the purchase of a new squad, and set up and transfer twenty-five thousand to a village hall building repair and maintain, maintenance Assigned Fund, leaving an unassigned fund balance of approximately twenty-eight percent of our annual general fund budgeted expenditures.
Well done, Mark, thank you.
Second.
Second from Paul, thank you, Paul, uh, let's see, that's spending basically, George?
Any discussion on that before we, we vote?
Thanks, Terry. All, or George, yes?
Yes.
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 Yes, okay. Here is, uh, Public Works Committee Recommendations, uh, let's see, Chair update, the chair's, uh, busy at the county meeting, uh, Mark, you got any, anything, George, uh, we kinda just went through what the main portion of your discussion was.
Well, there, there is an important item on here, it's item B, is the reimbursement that the, uh, Public Works, uh, did in fact recommend, uh, to the board, and you'll see that on the minutes, Public Works Meeting Minutes, right at the front of that.
Finance, finance.
Do finance.
Move to approve that to the, to the board level, so I recommend the village of North Hudson reimburse Ed Huestead of six forty-four Lemon Street North the sum of three hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents for the cleaning of his sewer lateral.
Second.
Thank you, Mark, George, uh, spending, Paul?
Aye, yes.
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 And, let's see, purchase of the new Public Works mower approval requested, and this was also discussed at finance, if we could have a motion?
Stan, I'll move to recommend the village of North Hudson trade-in the new Holland MC twenty-two mower with cab and snow blower, it's a nice one, for a new two thousand thirteen grasshopper, three twenty-nine zero turn mower, from value implement at a cost not to exceed five thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Mark.
Second.
Paul, I guess we'll take Paul's, a second, any discussion?
It's a good deal.
They're a dandy.
Okay, well, you put your bids in, so, uh, okay, that's another spending, George?
Yes.
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 Thank you all. Public safety, Mr. Zappa?
We had no requests from the board, and if you read the minutes, everything is detailed in there of what we discussed.
Thank you, Mark, uh, public welfare, I don't believe met, Park Board did, Colleen?
We did, um, we will be having the new playground equipment installed in Glen Elts Park in July, that'll be a nice, um, addition for the kids down there especially, and we also had been discussing improving the path that is for walking from Cherry Circle to Galahad, since it was going to be torn up as part of the shopyard projects, we had discussed improving it, um, and decided that it would be best just to, um, use the Class V aggregate because the other, if we paved it with asphalt, it was gonna come to eleven thousand, and our little park board budget can't afford that.
Thank you, Colleen.
So I moved to resurface the walking path from Cherry Circle north to Galahad Road north with a six-inch thick base of Class V aggregate gravel for the trail and place posts at each end to deter motor vehicles at a cost not to exceed one thousand five hundred dollars.
Can I vigorously second that, Stan?
Okay, is there any discussion?
The, uh, aggregate, how is that for walking on? I was wondering if down the road, if, you know, did, that's something where you'd put wood chips or something like that over the top of it?
Basically, George, it's gonna be a ton of the money to have now, because what we have now is, uh, basically it's, uh, leftover material from Seacoast.
Yeah.
I use it for flooring in my house, it's just fine.
Is this the kind of, that, that kinda white stone that just ends up packing really well, and, like, some of the bike paths are made out of it?
Yeah. Oh, okay.
White stone.
Yep, the yellow.
Little bitty white, yellowish, limestone.
George, what did you say, wood chips or something?
The limestone.
It's like they use those pads and through the woods and. In Minnetonka.
Well, okay, I can comment on the wood chips on a path, I know at, uh, at Three M Cottage Grove, we spent numerous dollars on, on loading it with wood chips, and the gophers loved the, to undermine it, so they have taken those paths out because the wood chips attract the bugs, the bugs attract the vermin, and the vermin makes it very easy to spin your ankles through there, so, you know?
Maybe we could put some street sweepings in there.
So, uh, Colleen, anything else?
No, but we need to hold on my motion.
Oh, we gotta vote on that, sorry, I mean, the, the discussion got.
It was excited about the second, so.
Yeah, it was, it's becoming less vigorous as we go on.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Okay. Uh, okay, the next item is, uh...
I have a question on this one, um, we have two things, uh, two, right? And they're in separate individuals, um, do they both want closed, or did one of them want open, or does it matter? I know one of them recommended closed, asked for it specifically. We should do them.
Separately.
Separately, so, yeah, but other, the one motion is fine, you just read it as is.
That would be, okay, so, do we have this?
Yep, you just got to read that over.
We're gonna convene in the closed session for statute, or quote statute, nineteen point three five parent one, parent F, to consider financial, medical, social, or personal histories, or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary considerations of specific personnel problems, or investigation of charges against specific persons except where par, parent B applies, which, if discussed in public, would likely have substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, uh, or involved in such problems or investigations with respect to an appeal of an operator's license denial.
Motion, second, and a roll call vote.
Okay, motion to move into closed session.
Didn't you make the motion?
Yep, it's dead, I'll second it.
Stan's motion, okay.
Aye.
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 Yes.
Okay, we are now in closed session. Thank you, gentlemen.